Okay.
All right, so we can open it. Good evening. This is Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some attendees participating by video conference accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, the ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not, screen share with your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured and recorded forever and ever, and will wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your friends and neighbors. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the Planning Board and our and anticipated people on the agenda, which we don't have any, our president can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
And Tom Sanford here. With the quorum of the board president, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-three P M. Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After concluding remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide any comment, questions, penetrating insights, and or motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yield of the floor, state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member, please do so through me, avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. I will entertain motions to accept the minutes of the meeting from our last meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
There is a question mark that nobody responded on.
Oh.
It says Carolyn noted that there are options to modify local zoning restrictions using overlays, et cetera, in town meetings, but a state C R requires a two-third vote on the State House floor. In fact, new legislation will disallow.
Uh, will disallow forty B projects from impacting wetlands.
All right.
Second. Now I'll second. I knew there was something.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the meeting minutes.
As modified, as amended.
Modified by Jay. I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. So for um mail, this is probably a good thing. So um I am going to need some help with this because in our mailbox, I got a whole bunch of stuff from June and um not very nice. So what she's done is she's gone back through all of the old accounts that we've had and anything that we've had articles for, going back as far as two thousand and fourteen. That's twenty-two, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-eighteen. So she has all of our articles where we've had money for the Planning Board or money for the um master plan. And she wants us to fill out these encumbering sheets, which include an estimate of when we're going to pay and how much we're going to pay, or she's going to recommend that these monies be returned to the Capital Planning Committee.
Is one of them the traffic mitig- well, traffic mitigation for Gates Pond Road.
That was not in here.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Because that one's been sitting around for a while, but just making sure.
Yeah, no. So what we have, I'll run through them really quickly if you want, is a um our um is money for us for last year. And then it goes to
Like the budget?
To two thousand dollars for our budget. Well, actually, we only got a thousand dollars last year. So I don't know why it says two thousand dollars. So I don't know what that doesn't give me a fiscal year. It just gives me a group and a segment. It doesn't give me a date. Article nineteen. So whatever article nineteen was. Anyways, uh, so the next one is a two thousand and fourteen, special article thirty-five, two thousand dollars. Uh, Planning Board, welcome to Berlin Road Signs for two thousand dollars. I didn't think you got two thousand dollars for that in two thousand and twenty-two.
That's for the um Economic Development Committee to spend.
But wasn't it was two thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Was it that much? Okay.
So that's still there. That's two thousand and twenty-one.
Fiscal year twenty-two she has.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, we voted it in twenty-one.
Correct.
Where's the sign?
They're working on it now.
Well, did we see this? This is the stuff I need to to fill out these encumbering sheets. We need to have either an estimate to go along with it, or I mean, they, you know, it's, this is some heavy lifting that's going to have to be done if we want to protect this money.
Yeah.
I'm afraid.
And she wants that done by the end of the month, I bet.
She wants it done. It has to be returned to her by no later than July fifteenth.
Oh, all right.
So we do have a little bit of time, but
Yeah.
There, there is some, I mean, you know, you got to estimate, you got to have um uh, and a a copy of an estimate for whatever you're going to spend the money on to go with it, to be a staple to the encumbering sheet. Um, I mean, it's worse if we were running a department because you got payroll, payroll expenses. Has to be broken down into, you know, vacation and sick pay. And I mean, it's really arduous for that. So I'm glad we don't have that, but um you, you know, you're going to have invoice dated dates on invoices or services uh that'll be happen after July, uh, June thirtieth. All encumbrance must be itemized. Um, you know, so I mean, there's a lot of separate bill schedules. So there's quite a bit of of heavy lifting there. There's one in here too for um the um regional uh asset regional housing. Now, we haven't got the dues yet. We put the money in there for the dues, but we haven't got billed for that yet.
What's it, twelve thousand bucks?
It was twelve thousand bucks. We spent four hundred and fifty dollars for something.
What year?
Uh, again, it's hard for me to say, Tim, because it says.
But it must be F Y twenty-two because we just joined.
Correct.
The consortium.
Yes, it is. I take it back. Parameters fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two.
Right. And Tim, didn't we just, what did we sign?
We just signed the dues to um, the, the CPA consortium. That comes out of CPA money.
That's what I mean. The oh, no, yeah, 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 yep, yep.
We had an estimate. They said the estimate was going to be around ten thousand dollars or ten-five or something like that for, for the
So
regional asset regional.
Let me worry about the asset regional one.
Okay, I can drop this off to you, Tim, because it's got all the paperwork and the sheet.
But there's only twelve. There's only that one, though. Yeah, that would make sense.
For what? For asset?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep. But the rest of it's all master, well, a lot of it's master planning money. So five, ten, fifteen. Yeah, as well, fifteen K.
And master plan?
In various years.
I would think that we'd spend, we could spend five of hours for the housing production plan and then make the housing partnership pay the other sixteen thousand. It's like twenty-one. So if we spend five of the, of the fifteen that we've got, that will be good. Then we've got the, the, the completion of the Center Village Study, which I think that was six of them. So that would finish off five plus dig into the next five. And that would leave us with like thirty-four hundred or something like that, plus the five we got this year, I assume. So we'll erase two of those and have thirty-four hundred, but I think we can easily say because we've always suggested that it was going to take us a number of years to expend that, that the next step in the in the master plan, which, I mean, we could argue it could be a whole series of things, and we could, you know, we could say it'll be transportation. You know, um, because and, and we could argue that it would go toward some of the complete street stuff that we're working on or, you know, whatever. So those aren't bad. We can handle that.
All right. Then what about the, like, the two K that we're keeping for our, our budget from way back when?
I'd say give it back.
Give it back?
Yeah, because that's for like, that's only, we can only use that for printing and hearings and stuff like that. And, you know.
Well, we should keep some of it because we haven't got the bill yet for the um, the um publication for the articles. The public hearing. So we haven't got that. We did get proof of publication.
But how long? That's from two thousand and four, well.
So there's some stuff there for two thousand and fourteen that we haven't used.
And that's the, that's the only we just picked up a thousand this year, or did we?
Correct.
The budget should go away every year and get refund replenished every year. Like at the end of the year, whatever you didn't spend goes back. And then you get your new.
Right.
We've been carrying it over. That's what's been bugging everybody.
Really? How do you do that?
With special.
You are.
But they
Yeah, you were special.
Whoa, Eloise is in the audience and has her hand up.
They can carry it forward because it's in the special article. If it's in the line item budget, it disappears June thirtieth.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I knew Tim was special, but you know.
Eloise, is it all right for us to spend some of your money for the housing production plan?
I think this is the first time you asked.
We always ask.
Yeah, you tell afterwards.
Well, you're going to end up with uh more money than you know what to do with, so. We might as well, we might as well spend some of it, right?
Well, the Housing Trust will uh sort that out real fast.
We can populate it with, with members, yeah.
That's next on, on our agenda. Certification of the proceedings and stuff of the Attorney General.
So it, so it's it's the three master plan allocations.
Yep.
The sign that they're, they're working on spending that money now. And the twelve thousand for asset. And then just that other two thousand from two thousand and fourteen.
No, there's some more than this. So there's two thousand from two thousand and fourteen. There's another two thousand from two thousand and seventeen. Actually, it's twenty-one, thirty-two, twenty-one, for whatever reason.
But it'd be a balance.
Might be a balance.
It was probably twenty-five hundred and you ran an ad or something.
Could be, but that's usually we were like two thousand, you know, full whole numbers. There's a little bit left over from Economic Development for two thousand and seventeen. And then the, the other ones are master plan. So this two thousand, two, this fourth, forty-one hundred and forty, so say forty-two, almost forty-three hundred dollars.
In just expenses?
Yep.
You know, we don't need all that. There's, how many? Three articles?
There's four four articles.
And the most recent is how much? The two thousand and seventeen one?
I know, two thousand and twenty. Oh, I mean, that's, uh, welcome to Rome. Um, so the, the most recent one would be, hang on one second. Master plan, economic development. So there's a little bit in two thousand and seventeen for Economic Development. And then the other one is a that's master plan, two thousand and seventeen, and then two thousand and seventeen, two thousand dollars. So it really is twenty-one, twenty-one hundred and forty-seven dollars in our general account. The rest of them are allocated either signs, welcome to Rome signs or um master planning.
And, and the two thousand from two thousand and fourteen is?
Says zero zoning bylaw plan. There was a special article number thirty-five.
I'll go back and look at that one in the warrant.
Eloise is
She's Yeah.
Usually, we, you've put in two thousand at least every other year so that when you had zoning changes and I had to have books printed.
Right.
Was before they put it, made it available on the town's website.
Right.
And I had to, you know, I, it was not unusual to make between thirty-five and fifty books a year.
Right. And that might be left over from there.
Yeah, probably. That's all I had to say.
Yeah, because we did put some articles on just to do printing as opposed to expenses, so.
So if we haven't used it, we can let it go back?
Yeah.
All right.
Because
Eloise again.
How many is you selling, Eloise?
Excuse me?
How many do you, how many town, I mean, how many zoning bylaws do you sell now? Not many, right?
No, maybe one or two, and that's only when they're needed for court cases.
Yeah.
Because the court, I have to provide certified copies. That's why I'm always afraid they'll find that I made an error.
We could almost take the printing costs of that out of our regular budget.
Yeah, well, that's something that you have to go through it for a couple of years to get a handle on, you know, what's
Right. And maybe some years that you spend more than others.
Correct. Particularly if you have, you know, two town meetings a year or
Right.
Unusual circumstance.
Good. Good.
All right. Well, I, what I can do, Timmy, is I can drop down the one for asset for you. And then we'll go over these one more time just to make sure that what we're letting go is okay, and what we're going to try to keep is okay.
Yeah, if you want to get together sometime, you know.
All right.
Well, fifteen, twenty minutes, half an hour, you know, we
Yep.
Let me know when.
Um, okay. End of the week, maybe?
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere.
I'm not either.
Spain, you know, Spain, we have to go to Spain next week, but that's it.
Going to Spain.
But you'll be back on Saturday.
We're just going for two days, yeah.
Yeah.
Taking the farm jet?
Yeah. A tractor.
All right.
Great.
Uh, anything else?
That's all I have. I don't, for five person that was supposed to be here for seven forty-five decided not to show. I don't have anything else.
It, they didn't indicate what their goal was, did they?
They just wanted to continue the discussion and figure out what they can and can't do.
Right. Those are, that's the nature's best moes.
Yeah.
Property people, yeah.
Two fifty-six.
I asked her to send us drawings ahead of time if they wanted to discuss drawings, but then she sent me a email today saying she had COVID.
Oh.
Oh, bummer.
Come another time.
Yeah.
Bummer.
Yeah.
Um.
I think Louise, Eloise has her hand up again.
Okay.
Sorry for being verbose tonight, but I believe in the Planning Board mailbox. Um, you, the document that you all have to sign is I have to, in turn, get it to Worcester Registry of Deeds.
When did you put that in? Because I, when did you put that in?
I think right after you
Building.
You saw me drive away and then went and put it in the mailbox.
I wish.
Oh, good, he's gone.
And two people, two of the voters yesterday tested positive for COVID today.
Two of the voters?
Yep. They were down there around one thirty, so I'm in the process of trying to notify all my election workers.
Ah, that's a bummer.
Oh, good. I was in and out before that. That'll teach me to vote when there's no contests.
An absentee ballot was available.
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Ouch.
I love the delivery.
And I will be sending out something, you know, you get the annual open meeting calendar.
Yeah.
But we're not quite there yet. Right now, I'm doing the um proceedings certifications of the proceedings and James is preparing the stuff for the Attorney General, so that's on the list right after those projects.
Nice.
Okay. So we need signatures from the members?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Um, do you want to just leave it there and we can run down at our leisure to sign it?
It's up to you.
That are running around?
Yeah, that'll be better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be easier. Can you swing by in your tractor, Jay?
Well.
Always take
Find some vehicle.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
That place is full of COVID. I'm not going in there.
Every place is full of COVID, like more people have COVID than don't have it now.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, knock on wood.
But they're not overrun in the hospitals yet, so.
No.
Right.
No, they just get the sniffles.
Mild cases. Problem is, you can't tell if it was allergies or what.
Right.
Oh, my gosh, especially right now with the wind. My eyes have been, I just wanted like
So I know three people who have eye allergies this year that never usually have them.
They make antihistamine eye drops that are amazing.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. It's the, the brand I use is Zaditor. And it's, I couldn't even believe the difference that it makes.
Huh.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. See, so we achieved something tonight.
Um, I I put uh the surveys in nineteen Carter, the town hall, the library. There at Brook Lane and there at Sawyer Hill LLC. And I've got them here at the farm.
What are we doing about the school mailings? Anybody working on that?
That's all I've done so far. I, the social media stuff is Greek to me.
Um, I mean, if someone wants us, wants to send a link, I can post it on, oh, well, I should have a link, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I can Yeah. I gave, I gave all of my handouts that I had left over from town meeting um to be put in the common rooms up at Mosaic and Camelot.
Oh, and we gave some to somebody too.
Okay, good.
So they, and then we gave some to somebody for Brook Lane.
Ron.
Ron took them, that's right. So, yeah, if, if you could if there's a way for, what do you use? Berlin Neighbors, whatever, or?
Berlin Neighbors, whatever, exactly. Yes, Berlin, Berlin Neighbors Connect.
You'll do that?
Yep.
That's great.
What about the schools?
We need to get in touch with Julie Lee for that.
You know her?
Uh, Tim and I both know her.
So we just send her a link?
Um, so it depend, do we have? So we can send something, they physically put pieces of paper in the kids' backpacks every week, so we can either send to, if we have more of the handouts, we can send the handouts. That'd probably be the easiest thing. Um, so do you want me to get in touch with Julie and find out how many? Or find out if
If we can do it?
If we can do it, how many we need, when we need to get them to who and all that.
Like two hundred kids in school, isn't that right?
Yeah. That'd be great. If you would do that.
I will.
And what about Tejantou?
That one's a little harder because they don't
Kids in both, both towns.
Right. And they don't do like the same kind of handout backpack stuffing, yeah.
But I thought there were, they had email lists that we might be able to send an email out.
That could be true. I'll ask Julie if she knows anything about Tejantou. Um.
Email might be better because then people can do it on their phone when they're sitting around.
Yeah.
Do we have it on, do we have it on the um Town of Berlin webpage?
Which one?
The regular, the not my town government.
Oh, Town of Berlin? How do we, what, if I gave it to James, Eloise, if I gave it to James, can he put it on the planning board's page or something, or the town page?
Eloise.
She left.
How come she was talking all that that we, you know, don't usually expect, and now we can't get her to even talk to us?
I know.
Eloise Saul's front and center. I'll talk to James.
Yeah.
Because he, I would think he could tell us. Well, I think he could probably just go ahead and do it. So we put it up on
But who do you think goes to the, look at the webpage?
No one.
Oh, okay.
But, but I think we still
We should put it.
To say that it's there. Yeah.
Yeah. I think Berlin Neighbors Connect and stuff like that's gonna probably, is there, is there a Berlin Facebook page or something like that?
There is a Town of Berlin Facebook page. Mary Arada, I believe, does that.
That doesn't have the wildlife sightings and things that draw an audience.
That's true. That really only gets traffic when there's, when an accident.
Oh, so we could make up something. We could.
We could.
Yeah, we could make up some sort of scandal.
Right.
And say, click here, and they come to the survey.
Right.
Yeah.
That's some marketing thinking. I like that, Tim.
And then, and then we give them, we tell them there's a prize for whoever fills out the survey first.
Right.
Which they won't be, but they won't know that.
We could send everybody a quarter and then they'll feel filtered into filling out a survey and I've got.
No, I think a nickel, nickel.
Yeah, they just peel the nickel off and toss it in the trash.
I found out that the three family I recently purchased has a coin up washing machine that was full of quarters.
Nice.
Have to like give that back.
Bonus. No way.
Property, right?
No, you own it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe it's called Finders Keepers.
And quarters are getting like extinct, so they're probably valuable.
25 cents at least. Yeah. And when I had jury duty, I had to bring cash. Because they don't, you know, they have the little snack cart in the jury room, the holding tank. And I'm like, cash? I don't even know where to get cash anymore. Never mind have any.
I tried to get some at the bank the other day. And like, all except two Bank of America branches have been closed. And the ones you go to, there's only like one teller. So you stand in line. I stood in line for 20 minutes to get cash.
You know, we, there is a wonderful bank in the center of town here.
I know. It's some places wonderful. It really is. It's great. Cindy forgets to sign something, they call her up and say, hey, Cindy, did you? Looks like you didn't sign this. I don't know if they actually sign it for her.
No, no, no.
They're very friendly. But I tried to send a wire transfer to a little bank in the UK the other day and they did not do it work. It was complicated.
I usually, when I need cash, I go to Market Basket and buy a thing and just use my debit card and get cash back.
Yep, it's going away.
Yeah.
Bitcoin soon.
Say that. Don't say that. That's terrible. Tim's gonna start taking Bitcoin at the farm though next summer.
Oh, God.
Can I use Apple Pay at your farm now?
Um, I'm trying to, I never understand all that stuff.
Can you take your phone and wave it over a magic thing and have it pay for it? Yeah. So yes, Jay, you can.
Is that what that means?
Yep.
Yeah, people, they, they take their phone and just go, and I say, I don't understand how this happened. And they say, well.
Have a nice day.
Theoretically, I've paid you. And I said, well, theoretically, thank you.
Well, they paid you less, paid you less 3%. Yeah.
Yeah. Joy, joy.
Yeah.
I can remember when we first put credit card machines in thinking we'd probably, we use it occasionally because people would want to buy some big ticket item like a big flower arrangement for a hundred bucks or something. But now it's 70%. There's still 30% cash, but
Yeah.
Well, everybody's using 50s, you know, so.
Well, it's because they're printing them up.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have to put them.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, well, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn any further discussion. Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford. Aye. Motion carries.